I can do that.
Oh, well.
I'm not sure I understand. Is there?
Hey, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Davies County Council.
Sorry, I couldn't find.
For the meeting for December 11th, 2024, please rise and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Morning, everyone. Welcome. Let the record show that all members of council are present. Thank you. Okay, our first order of business was the executive session, executive meeting that we held on 12/3. That meeting was held interviews and negotiations with industrial commercial prospects or agents of industrial commercial projects. That's simply all that was discussed at the meeting. The next item would be the meeting minutes from 11/13. They're in your packets. They were distributed electronically also. Any comments, concerns, or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Marilyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tony. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Okay, we have a list of appointments for 2025 that we tabled last meeting. Since that time, I have been in contact with Natalie Smith concerning the ABC or the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and she's agreed to serve another year on that. Darren, I guess I was in error. I think that actually was a two-year term for the library director because it's not on her this year, so.
Okay. Well, she said okay.
She was good with it. Fantastic.
I contacted her. She said, yeah. So, you're good.
Good. Everything else, I think we had covered with the exception of the BZA.
Yeah, we have a nomination for the BZA planning board would be Travis Schaefer has agreed to serve at that capacity. I will make that nomination.
I'll take that.
Okay. Nomination for Travis Schaefer for the Board of Zoning Appeals, most of the main second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Carried 6-0. I think that would conclude. Do we need a motion to approve those in entirety? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the council's 2025 appointments.
Still moved.
Moved by Mike Myers. Is there a second? Second by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. 6-0, abstain. Thank you. Okay. Contract disclosure. It's the annual things. Okay, so four and five on our agenda, they're the items that we annually have to sign and put. So before the meeting's over today, everyone, please sign those and get them back to the auditor's office. Great, thank you. Okay, item six is the Kratos Defense and Security Tax Abatement. We have Tim and Matt here, but would you guys have any comments before we get started? Okay. We'll just have Grant do the, read the declaration, and then we'll have questions if there are any.
Also, Brian. Quite a bit of discussion about this. Kratos application. Talked about it. Our second step in the process. Review a declaratory resolution. Package. Together with the capital of Kratos. Personal property. The declaratory resolution. But determine this with their question. Taxes there are. Eight. Call Alpha 588. Not you. You. Like. Questions?
Grant, would it be appropriate for you to read through that declaration?
Yeah.
I think you probably should put it.
Yeah, just give it back to me. Okay. This declaratory resolution designating a 40. Kratos here. As the county council of Davis. Property. Here. Active. First thing. President council hereby finds a. Amendment. Felting. Actors. In development of property. Designation adhered. Priya. Press Westgate 1. Kratos. Value of payment. If making. Equipment. Property. Let's read about.
Thanks. Ready to start over?
You're good.
And has submitted documents attached here too, which is the application for the abatement, which includes a statement of benefits for real property and personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Davis County, Indiana, that the real estate is hereby designated as an economic revitalization area within the meaning of the Indiana Code. Notice of the adoption and substance of this resolution and all other documents and disclosures required by Indiana Code shall be published in accordance with Indiana Code 531. I've drafted a notice that will go out after this meeting, assuming you approve of this, which notice shall state a date for a public hearing on this resolution, and that on said date, after hearing any objections and remonstrances, and considering evidence thereon, this council will take final action determining whether the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming, modifying, and confirming or rescinding this resolution. A copy of the above referenced notice shall be filed with the officers, officers of each taxing unit that has authority to levy property taxes in the geographic area, which is hereby designated as an economic revitalization area, and that should be done at least 10 days prior to the public hearing on the resolution adopted this date. So you've got your application attached. Right here, there was two documents, both personal and real, and then our standard abatement application. The overlapping tax districts would be. Maybe simply the library. I'd have to think about who that would be. I can get with Jen, but we'll publish notice after this meeting regarding your January meeting wherein you have to make a determination about what the scale looks like. And I can work with Bryant, Bob, Matt, and Tim about what that looks like, but obviously it's your decision about what it should look like. So a lot of moving parts up at Westgate, and this is an important piece, so thank you. Thank you, Grant. Questions? Comments? Yes, if you'd like to.
Hello, Matt Conrad of Stimulus, representing Kratos. And I just want to say Kratos really appreciates your support and consideration. Certainly, if you have any questions, we're happy to discuss that. The one update from last month when we talked is just that Kratos continues to have conversations with Crane and some of the other DOD installations and the greater and greater opportunity we work here. So it's, they are, they continue to be happy with discussions that are being had and hope that additional contracts will come from that. Be performed.
Good.
Any questions at all?
I think we've about exhausted all those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for coming down this morning. Very good.
You're welcome.
Goodbye.
I just wanted to share one insight. You know, the application is wonderful in terms of jobs and investment, but it did have a range, and I just kind of, I think I restated before that we'd want to be able to put in a value that we're going to then benchmark annually when we come back and review these. And I think Tim and Matt noted that it's a little fluid because of Cranes and Kratos, the defense contracting and whatnot, but I still think it's something we should keep in mind and try to narrow that number down of the jobs and investment so we can, we can benchmark against it in the future.
Very good. Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
I guess one of the questions I did have the other day was with regards to Kratos' contracts with Crane. Do they have an existing contract that's already been established, or are they still pending a contract?
Thanks for that there. And they do have, I believe it's two, one specific contract on the mock TB side, and that's the funding, what is driving this initial building that's happening. I believe there's a second. I know there's a second contract in discussion. I don't know if they have it yet. I can confirm that. But that first contract is what is driving. That is a contract that has been awarded and has, I think there is hope that there will be additional money that comes out of that same contract.
Do you know what the length of period is for that contract?
What I was told is it's, this and at least one other are five-year contracts, which is the longest they'll typically give with plans to renew, but it's only a five-year initial term.
Yeah, obviously, depending on execution and performance, they would, okay. But initially, it looks like an initial five-year contract.
Initial five-year contract.
Okay.
With discussions that it will be renewed beyond that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Grant, can you bring that stuff back up here, please? Thank you. Okay, so our order of business today is the declaratory resolution. Do we have any more discussion or motion? See?
Yeah, I'll make a motion proceed.
I'll second.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Matt, that we proceed with the tax abatement process for Kratos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Thank you. Jen? Thank you, Grant. Okay, next item of business is the salary ordinance amendment. We actually have three. I think at least two are in our packet there. First one is the security center, $5,000 in overtime. Sheriff Allison.
Yeah, that's not new tax money. That's just moving it out of the jailer's line item over to cover some overtime. That particular jailer was off for almost six, seven months with a Portman's comp. Had over there to cover the rest of this month.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want it a time or do I do both? Okay. Thank you. The second one is adult probation. It's a part-time funding for $3,000. I got that wrong. The transfer. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the request total for $8,000 in salary ordinance amendments. Moved by Matt, seconded by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
7-0. Hey, the third one we have today is.
From the. You want me to speak on it a little bit?
What's that?
You want me to speak on it a little bit? Because this, in regards to the 4D. Are you good?
I was gonna do it, but if.
I verified the 700.
Well, you go ahead, then.
So the 4D department has reached out and asked that they. They want to use their incentive fund, which doesn't have to be appropriated, so an appropriation did not have to be had in order for them to pay out wages to their employees of $700. So on their last, on this next pay schedule, they would like to pay that difference between the prosecutor's staff and the 4D staff that was done during budget cycle. So an appropriation didn't need to be done, but I explained to them that that salary ordinance had to be done in order for us to be able to pay that out. So the request came in yesterday late. I forwarded the email and her documentation to each one of you, so it's up to you guys if whether or not you wanted to go forth.
Okay, so. The prosecutor's office, Jennifer Johnson, put it out as a bonus, which, you know, we've made it clear that we don't pay bonuses. You know, our bonus program is through the longevity program that we have within the county. But in this case, when we made the changes to. Take the judge's stipend and give it to the court reporters, there was four people that were omitted when we did that, and that was the 4D, four 4D employees. So they are roughly $700 less than their counterparts, which we corrected during this year's budget cycle for '25, but it was not, it was not accurate the way we did it for 2024. So really, the request is $700 for those four associates, total of $2,800, and to really make their salary equal to the other employees in that department. There are questions? Any other questions on that?
Just our error last year.
It was, yes. And we're fixing it at the end of the year, and it's already corrected for next year. Is there more discussion or a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Matt.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Thank you.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, next item is additional appropriations. The first one, county general to pauper attorney has been rescinded. The judge has, judge and his staff have gone through, and they have actually enough funds to cover it for the end of the year, through the end of the year, so we're not going to take any action on the pauper attorney request. And the next one is edit for capital improvements. That's Tynan Montgomery wastewater project that was agreed to back, I think in '22, 2022. Request is for $250,000.
Still moved.
Moved by Tony. Is there a second? Second by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. 7-0. Okay, the third one is motor vehicle highway. It's moving, moving stuff from a restricted fund to different restricted fund, I guess. From 1173 to 1176, maybe it is. There's actually two of them on there. Motor vehicle restricted to by two minutes and road improvements. It's to. The first one actually is to separate gas and utilities, basically, so they can keep track of those better. The second one is actually moving funds to cover the asphalt and road improvements. Total was. I'm gonna add it up real quick there. $826,384 in the highway department, basically moving funds around.
Still moved.
Moved by Matt. Is there a second? Second by Darren. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Okay, the next item is restricted opioid settlement to prevention and education. That is for youth, funds for the youth first program, $10,000.
Still moved.
Moved by Mike Sprinkle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Those total appropriations totaled $1,111. Well, actually, they didn't because there was $25,000 off of that, so just about 1.1 million. We have some items on the transfers. First one is road improvements. For the TIFF Capital Projects, I think that's the GPC Road Improvement, $243,000.
Still moved.
Moved by Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Next, we have requests for transfers for the prosecutor's office. Office machines, from office machines furniture, office machines, license renewals, grand jury reporter, to depositions and transcripts, travel and mileage, office machines and office machines, totals. Just under $3,000, it looks like. Transfers. Questions? $3,002.05. It's part of the explanation. I don't know if you guys had time to read the explanation or not. She had a computer, computer crashed, and they're all dated at the same time, so.
Yep. No, I make motion to approve.
Motion by Matt. Is there a second? Second by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved 7-0. And we have pre-trial, it's office supplies and extra clerical to. Oh, that's the gun safes. This is for, and a camera for the school.
Resource officers.
School resource officers, yeah, at the schools. Total is $4,500. The camera, I think, was $1,100 of that.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mike Sprinkle. Is there a second? Second by Darren. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. And we have one for motor vehicle highway from blades to equipment. That's just for equipment repair at the county highway.
Still moved.
Moved by Tony. Is there a second? Second by Matt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. Security center, jail, we just went over that overtime account at the security center, $5,000. Moved by Marilyn.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. We have the annual training education for the veterans' office, $160 to office supplies and travel and mileage.
Still moved.
Moved by Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried 7-0. We have adult probation user fees from computer and machines to part-time expense, same thing we talked about earlier, employee $3,000. Moved by Marilyn. Second. Second by Darren. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Under item 10, information. Tony and I and Marilyn attended the hospital opening emergency room ribbon cutting ceremony yesterday at the hospital. It was very nice, well-attended, nice facility there for the county. We have Davies County Airport. Any comments on that, Matt?
I got a question.
Okay, Tony?
Couple of these grants are still negative year-end balance. Will be positive by year-end?
Other questions for Jen? Okay, I did attend the commissioners' meeting yesterday. I got a few notes on that. The courthouse update, everything's proceeding well there. They're working on completing the windows, you may have noticed. They should have that done. Once they get that done, they'll be able to keep the temperature climate inside more consistent, and continue to work with drywall and things like that in their third, I guess the third floor is really good, second floor is intermediate, and they're still doing a lot of work on the bottom, bottom first floor. They figure the first floor be done by end of January. There is, issue came up yesterday, I don't know if you've looked, the rooftop units, you can kind of see them from the ground, they're pretty big, so they're working on trying to conceal them a little bit better up there from the, from the public eye. Don't know how that's going to happen yet, but it was an item of discussion yesterday. Targeting. April 17th is the completion date, and probably won't work. They still have issues with just getting the switchgear in. That's the thing that connects the electrical for the building. That's not supposed to be here till 3/28. So that's gonna, if it stays that way, we're looking at like a May 1 completion date, about two weeks. They get everything in, but they can't do a lot of testing without that switchgear in there. Davies County Highway gave a lot, a lot of information, Chris always does. One thing that did come up was the countywide radio system. They're going to be able to use the similar, same system we're on, so I think that worked out great. They had some issues with the coal haul route, trucks not using that. They're going to enforce that, understanding. And then they have, they've gotten grants of 1.5 million from the community crossing grant, and they're advertising those jobs out to get done for next year. The mental health center came and gave a report there. They saw 1,200 patients last year, and they're like a regional, they have Knox County and the surrounding counties of it. I think it's a four-county deal, it services adults and children both. They have a three-step process there. They have crisis services, which is state-sponsored. They have a crisis hotline that you can call. They have a mobile crisis team, and more recently, they're going to have like a safe house, so you don't have to go to the jail or to the hospital to get 24-hour treatment. You can go to a safe house. Right now, that's just for adults, but by the end of January, I think it'll be for children also. Or young adults, I don't know. The county extension contract was approved yesterday. That was for $325,000. That was in the amount that was in the budget for next year. You had buggy permits. There's about 3,000 buggies in the county. The price for a buggy permit went up to $175, and pony cart, which I think is a single-axle buggy, I'm not exactly sure how they determine that, but I think it's a single axle, and it's $125 if you use a pony cart. The issue on that is they want to try to increase that about $50 a year till we can get up to the amount that helps cover the actual destruction of the horseshoes on the highway. So I think they're going to top that out at about $350 a permit. So I, I think they're gonna top that out at about three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, permit over the next two to three years. And probably the most contentious part of the meeting yesterday was the library expansion project. Um, I think the Commissioners had given notice that the library was to get with the local trustees and town, town boards within the area that was impacted. I don't know how successfully that was done. It appeared that there was no support from that area, or very little support, I would say, from the trustees. I think it pretty much, everyone agrees that the library is a great service for the community, a great draw for employers. None, none of us dispute that. The Commissioners don't dispute that. We all are in favor of that. Um, the, the, the problem that you get into is a, a lack of transparency with, with the library team and, and the the, um, increase of about a hundred and forty percent of their budget. Which their budget right now is about, just under four hundred thousand. They wanted to take that to a million, which is already a full-service library. Um, and there was really just not enough transparency there to, I think, to get your value, to say you're getting value for, for that kind of expense, so. My hope is that, and the Commissioners' hope was, that they can come back to the table with, um, some reasonable, reasonable requests for, uh, budget, budgeting, and hopefully even get that team together, the library team and the friends of the library, together with the township trustees and town boards to to make, make that happen. But what, uh, wh- once you get a, a new board established there, if it does get approved, then you'll have representation from actually the communities that are being served by the library instead of just the city of Washington. So hopefully, hopefully it'll work out. Um, right now, the Commissioners took no action on it because it really wasn't supported from a financial standpoint. There's a lot of emotions ran very high on that issue, but I, I think the true, the true problem is money, of course. Okay? Anything from the public? Comments, concerns, questions? Go ahead.
Sort of that while we're at it. Bryant and I were just talking that, um, you know, we're excited about, uh, the Kratos project and, and Westgate and, and all the hard work that communities put into that project. Just yesterday evening, we became aware of, of another inquiry at Westgate that, that would look to the council for some measure of, uh, of property tax incentives. So it will be going through that process we've discussed of, of, of how to approach that and, and get the information to the, to the appropriate persons, but it's great news, of course. I just wanted to share that as, as part of your considerations going forward.
Thank you, Bob.
That was our Christmas present. Yeah, I'll just add too, Tom, that, um, we had, uh, the Westgate Authority yesterday. We had, we had, uh, our closeout. We had not been, uh, I don't wanna say audit's the proper term, but reviewed, uh, by the State Board of Accounts in six years. So we had, uh, we had our audit here recently, and, uh, so, uh, we came out with, uh, no, no major issues, uh, which is a, a good thing.
Yeah.
A few minor things that we need to, you know, at, at management-wise to, to address, but otherwise, but Jamie Chapman was up there. She serves as the official treasurer for the, uh, Westgate Authority. And so she's, um, she was there for it as well. Jen had come up, but they wouldn't let her stay for the meeting.
We'll support.
But she, but she sat in through our regular meetings, so, but, uh, but no, that was a, a, a good thing, and, um, as, as far as the, uh, the Westgate Authority Board, we did go ahead and, uh, we're going to, uh, uh, renew our contract with, uh, Purdue Research Foundation, uh, for th- for three-year contract. Uh, we also, uh, are then boarding a, a contract with, uh, USTF, Bryant's organization, uh, for, uh, a year for support. And I think one of the things that probably needs that people don't quite understand is the Westgate Authority, um, I was of the understanding, you know, when I first came, what, came, got onto that, to that board, that, um, it basically was the authority over all of the tech part. Uh, and in, in reality, that's true, but in, or in theory, that's true, I should say. In reality, it doesn't quite work quite that way, but things are changing, and that's one of the reasons why um, uh, getting the, the contract in place with USTF for them to be belly, basically the belly button, uh, and to have oversight over, uh, and, and in essence, be the Lito for Westgate Authority, so that he can work with all of the other Letos within the three counties. Basically, do the true development that the, that the, the, the tech park needs. Uh, 'cause that's something that's just, it's just not that whole, that whole, um, in terms of, uh, having somebody with the big picture and the long-term strategy has not really been there. I think the, the Westgate Authority has been more internally focused in terms of primarily what's going on within the academy. And, uh, but so there's, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of things going on with Westgate, and I think the, the authority is now in the, moving in the right direction in terms of looking at the long-term, bigger picture, and working then with the owners and the tenants within, within the park itself, looking forward and looking how we can continue to grow. So again, a lot of, a lot of good things happened yesterday, uh, at the Westgate meeting.
Good. Thank you, Darren. Appreciate that update. Any other business to discuss? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by-